All right, it's a little bit past seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. I apologize about the delay. We've got several things to add to the agenda in the last minute. I'll address all those during the mayor's comments. I'll open up with mayor's comments. I want to say a very big thank you to everyone involved in the fair and getting our hearts ready for the fair. Does anyone know what I'm talking about? Is there anything that someone noticed out of the blue that would have made the fair going experience that much nicer this year? No one noticed anything? All right, well, let me explain what we did. We were able to take the old airport building out there, put a fresh coat of paint on it, and put a brand-new roof on it. We did a cost-benefit analysis of what would be cheaper, to strip all the rust and the gunk and everything off that roof, or simply put new metal on it. And new metal was the way to go. Paint was donated from Ground Source, and we thanked them for their good efforts in getting that done. The tower was also painted, thanks to a donation by Ground Source. There were quite a few things done in that area to spruce it up. The gazebo was painted, and a lot was done. And I want to thank Mr. Farrell for being on top of that. Mr. Farrell took a very active role in making sure that the rubber met the road and things got done. And sir, I thank you for your efforts as well. Mr. Scott has approached me about our lounge there at the airport where pilots can fly in and take advantage of our amenities, or lack thereof. And that kind of might say a little bit about our community from a pilot that's just stopping by. So it's my intention here shortly to develop a plan to go ahead and make that lounge a little bit more amenable, so that when a pilot stops in, they think, "What a nice little community." We want that first impression to be certainly a good one. So again, we did a lot to get ready for the fair. There was a lot of people that stepped up to get things done. I was not one who put a whole lot of effort into it, and I want to not take any credit but to thank those who did. Mr. Farrell and Ground Source, thank you so much for everything you've done. Our part of the northern part of the city is starting to come around. It's nice that we can spend time, effort, and money enhancing our northern part of the city, as well as the southern part of the city. We've done a lot for the O'Vannon Center, and caring for the northern part of our city has always been my priority, and we've always worked very hard to do so. Likewise, we've also worked diligently on the south side of the city with Locust Street Project. I want to announce that everything is working very well on the project. We're getting a lot done. Nanny Candrell, who has been our forms and himself to implement decurbing, has stated this is the nicest job he's had in 30 years. And as much as things are going smoothly, he's gotten a lot of cooperation with the team that's been hired to work down there, and things are going disciplined. They're getting a lot of pipeline. I was out there this afternoon, and I got to operate a backhoe. I should not be allowed to operate a backhoe, but they thought it would be funny to see me up there. I'm not good at it. Not that I couldn't get better, but I wanted to get to run the backhoe. We have some gentlemen here with Drury and the University of Missouri Extension, and we have a very unique opportunity to take advantage of something. Mr. Coltrane, I haven't talked to you about this, but I think you would agree that this would be the perfect opportunity to set us up for success in our endeavors at getting grants in the future. We have an opportunity to be the beneficiary of a Healthy Lifestyle Initiative grant, and that's going to be, is it $2,500?
I believe it's $2,000. The local Extension Council received a grant from, I believe it's Missouri Federation Health. That grant could be used on simple things for direct costs, or it could be used, as most persons that work with grants would like, to leverage things. What we're suggesting from an Extension Council perspective is that they take $2,000 of the $4,000 and use that to look for a way to leverage long-term. To that end, I don't know if this is the time that we would like to talk about this, or...
Certainly, certainly. It's my understanding that we'll receive about $2,000 in the grant, and City Buffalo will kick in $2,000, and we'll have a nice study. As the board already knows, I'm very big on town hall meetings. I like to gain public consensus of where the public wants to see government go, and this is going to, I guess, enhance my endeavors there. And a few other points with this grant with government.
Yeah, I might stand and be able to talk.
Please. Did every member of the boards get a copy of...
Yeah, I sent an email earlier this morning. It really wasn't fully intending it for it to be a matter of record, but that's quite all right. What I'd like to do is, first of all, introduce myself. My name is Jeff Barber. I'm the Housing Environmental Design Specialist for University of Missouri Extension, a state specialist, also a registered architect and a lead AP. I have the pleasure of having a friend and colleague and former professor Jay Garrett. He's the director of the Center for Community Studies at Drury University, has been for, I believe, nearly a decade now, was the founding director there at Drury. That's how I know him. Also have with me Andy McCorkle. He's a livestock specialist in the region, but also, more importantly, is our county program director for Dallas County. His office is over there in the presumed courthouse in Middle Square. So what we've done is monies were received by the local Extension Council. We talked about how we could do that, met with Mayor Mead about how we might be able to have some real impacts right here in Buffalo, and then talked about what has occurred with the work that Professor Garrett and I have been able to achieve in surrounding communities. In the last 10 semesters, five years total, we've been rather intentionally partnered. And what we have here for the Board of Aldermen, I can pass these around, is a list of our projects and impacts. This actually goes back 10 years, but what it indicates are the successes that we've had. And if there's persons out here that care to see this, they're certainly welcome to take a look. To kind of get to the gist of it, in the last five years, we have done 27 projects for 26 communities. You do the math there, and you realize somebody got two projects. One of those was a community just north of us here in Warsaw. Randy Pogue, the city planner and administrator, had the opportunity, through some funding that came his way, to invest. In that case, I think it was about a $5,000 project. I'm not looking at the poster. But in that case, each of those cases, he had us look at the Drake Harbor front on what would be essentially the west side of their center city, and then also to look to the future on the riverfront to the south, or the Osage River front edge, and kind of an entryway to the community. In doing so, we created documents and presentations, and we'll get to that. We work with students in the community to have somewhere between four and five public meetings where initially, we will come in and do a workshop and listen to what the community needs, wants, what some of the big community problems are. We're not there to take a list of projects, but to understand from the citizen's perspective, a broad-based perspective, and to kind of set aside specific agendas, what are the big picture issues for the community. These are architecture students. Architects are good at solving problems, whether they're spatial problems, or sometimes, you know, architect-designed hospitals, that sort of thing. They also help in terms of designing communities. We will be bringing, in this case, we're proposing to bring eight students for the course of a semester. This will be their sole project during the semester. And in doing so, a student that normally goes through this, and every student in the School of Architecture goes through this course. It's a community engagement type of a course. They'll go through this course and invest about $200. It's an academic situation. The result of this, though, is these open meetings, starting with what I talked about, and then as the students begin to develop an understanding of the problems in the community, and I say problems, not in a negative way, but just what are the questions? What are the opportunities that maybe these students could bring some ideas to? As they do that, they will then come back and make presentations about things that they found in other places that seem to maybe address what's going on here. They'll bring back new understandings of programs that the University of Missouri has that they can implement here. Active living is really going to be our mandate here with Buffalo, in the sense of how do we get out of our houses, actually get moving a little bit, and get a little bit of this Belt Line off, and enjoy our community a little bit, as far as that goes. So we have that aspect. But what we've also done in these communities, and as you look down through there, you'll see several that have received the Governor's Dream Initiative, five actually. And in those communities, like Buffalo in particular, that have a square or a main street, there's been a way to focus on that as kind of the heart of the community. And to use this idea in the case of Buffalo and a Healthy Living Grant is how do we connect the heart of the community to schools, parks, active living, et cetera. And eventually, what that also turns into is potential for economic development. So the Dream Initiative in the five communities that we've worked with, they've been able to bring in or leverage funds somewhere in the neighborhood of $2.5 to $5 million. And those are numbers that come from Governor Blunt's administration, and now Governor Nixon's administration has perpetuated the program several years, but as the budget tightens across the state, that one begins to kind of fall to the wayside. And in a way, it's ran its course, because it was targeted towards mid-to-small communities. So anything from like a Marshfield, a Monette, those types of communities, it's worked well in those communities. So anyway, $2.5 to $5 million, five of those communities, that means that of the numbers that we've talked about here, Randy Pogue up in Warsaw and those five communities, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of $22,000 to $30,000, eight million, thank you, $22,000 to $30 million in impacts or leverages initially from the work. And what we're talking about in doing these projects isn't just simply a little five-year plan to gather everybody's little project they want to do, but what's going to be the impact or the vision for 20 to 25 years from now. Okay? And I'll give you a scenario, just so that we can kind of understand the difference. In Bolivar, the city council asked me, and I'll get to this in a second, that they're going to be working in the fall as well. They asked me, one of the aldermen said, "Well, isn't this a comprehensive plan?" And my response to that is, "No, it's not a comprehensive plan. This is a plan," or excuse me, "is an exercise that lets us ask questions that are beyond the scope of a comprehensive plan." A comprehensive plan is good for maybe five years. Oftentimes, it's outdated by the time it's printed. That's a comprehensive plan. In this situation, we're asking, "What about the youth of the community? What about bigger economic issues?" And this is the one I'll throw out to you. Anybody in the room remember what they paid for a gallon of gas in 1971? Remotely?
Twenty-one cents.
Twenty-one cents, okay. So let's just, for the sake of fluctuation in the market, big day, they paid a quarter day for a gallon of gas. What's somebody pay in 1991? It's a little bit of a trick question.
Eighty-five cents.
Eighty-five cents, probably not a bad average, okay? I can remember on January 17th, memory, January 17, 1991, it was 72 cents a gallon. I come back the next day, it was $1.83. Anybody know what happened in that night?
It was like a war.
I went home with that last syllabus. I'm thinking, I'm not ready to get out of school, turn on the TV, and I watched eight hours of primetime warfare for the first time ever. Okay? Triple in one day. Now, that's '71 to '91 for about 2011. Anybody pay $4 a gallon for gas in 2011? Okay. So what I'm doing is I'm charting for you just a simple line here. Every 20 years, over the last 40, that cost of fuel has increased by four times. Now, this is where in Bolivar, the young man in the front row said, "I'm not paying $12 or $16 a gallon." And I said, "Well, the chart says that you probably will within 20 years." And that's not assuming the $30,000 card every month that Shanghai's putting in. Okay? So, wow, that's kind of a downer. But the thing is, is what does that mean for this community? And those are the questions that we really need to ask. I can entertain some questions, or I can give you a couple of items, if that would help. I think I pretty much hit the big ones. I will say that this effort, this collaboration between MU Extension and Drury, has been recognized by both the House of Representatives in Jeff City and also the Senate. I personally was able to take and give witness to legislation in Washington, D.C., for the Truman Birthplace and Lamar, because of the work that this type of activity spawned. Okay? And beyond that, Jay and I have done some national conferences as well.
If I could just add a little bit about the process. One of the things that we always, this is a highly participatory process. It's not that the eight students come into this community, walk around, ask a few questions, and give you a vision for 20 years. This is a very participatory process. We involve, we have, as part of the agreement, a lettered agreement with Mayor, requested that there is an advisory committee that works with us. They work with us all the way through. It is really the role of the advisory committee to prepare the vision. What we are preparing is a visioning toolkit. We are doing the research and preparing the documentation from which the city of Bolivar or Buffalo and the committee can begin to prepare its long-term vision. In all these projects that we have done, we have engaged anywhere, on average, 40 to 60 community members each time. So this is a very broad-based grassroots effort. On the committee, we ask that there are high school students, so we want young students involved. They're going to be the future leaders of this town, 15 to 20 years from now. We want elder. We want all representation, from business leaders to housewives to everywhere. We want all voices. We want all naysayers to be involved. We will come back based upon your input and put up drawings, which would be what-if drawings. What if it looked like this? What if your vision could be this? We will be trying to move you outside the normal box that everybody's in. We will listen. The role of the students is to listen to the community and to assist the community in identifying what is the best approach for improving the community based upon the opportunities and construct. The leverage, as Jeff is saying, is total project cost is $4,500, which is direct cost. There is no profit or benefit of any kind in it, direct cost. It covers mileage, supplies, printing, meals when the students come back to work, and one administrative fee, which is a $500 fee to the summit of the community, extending for administrative purposes. That's the cost. What we have found in the communities is that the documents, we've been bringing a copy, but we have many, many piles of documents. It becomes a valuable tool for the community, the grant writers, to sit down and say, to funding agencies. We sat down as a whole community with the assistance of two universities and State Extension, and we came up with this vision. Our first step is we would like to do Roger Cave. Here's what we were kind of thinking about these drawings. Here's what the overall picture long-term might be. Here's our first step. Here's what we would like to do. We've worked, and it's going to be excellent. There has been valuable benefit to approaching it in that way. Instead of the community not having a vision, not having a document, not having imagery, not having the grassroots support, not having university involvement, you don't get any of it. Randy Pogue, I think it's the two projects. I don't know how long he did, but in the meantime, he has leveraged about $10,000 worth of those two projects into $10 million. So what I'm trying to get at is, it'll be extremely participatory. The success of the project will depend upon the community's engagement. What we're asking, the $2,000 extension, will be $2,500 in the city. Any questions?
Sure.
You want to ask?
Sure. I don't have any questions of yours right now, but I'll ask real quick, Mr. Coltrane, who is with Great River Engineering and does a lot of stuff for the city, in writing grants and finding that free money. Is this something that would help us with that?
You've already started on this process, as you did last fall. You've already started by your town meetings that you've done, by getting your vision to the citizens and by them passing a tax. Is this something that can help you? It's always good to have information. I'd caution you against rushing into the dream communities, thinking that it's going to be a pot of money at the end of the rainbow. I can give you a list of communities that match the communities that they've listed here, that would tell you they spend a lot of money with very little to return and the other way. What they're going to do is an exercise for these students to come in and gather data, and that's fine. It's part of, as you know, the Economic Development Department's directive for us to collect that data in order to apply and leverage money with them as well. So, you know, just, you need to apply a measure of reality along with this that is being presented tonight, and not have the expectation that this will solve or leverage you $10 million or do anything like that, because it will not, unless you just get as lucky as Warsaw did, having a lake and some development that came in that may not be rushing into the city of Buffalo. So, you know, I don't want to be on the downside of it, but I also know planners that would vehemently argue that comprehensive planning is a really important tool for a city to have, and that this can't even come close to replacing that. So, you know, are there good things in here? Sure. Is it worth moving forward with? You'd want to see the results of what they published for other cities and go through that before you, I would think, rush into doing something, so that you can give yourself a comfort level of what they're going to produce, which is going to be a similar thing that they produce for these other towns, is something that the city of Buffalo would be happy with at the end of this program.
Okay. Well, we can, to be honest, we would be more than happy to give you a long list of people that we have worked directly with in other communities, people to contact them, young ones we've already talked about, to see what kind of benefit. The other thing is, we're not providing a comprehensive plan. It's a vision. From that vision, you could create a comprehensive plan. The other thing is, you have to think that we're going beyond just creative plan. We're talking about community education. We're talking about grassroots enrichment and involvement. We're talking about vision. A community can go nowhere without a vision. You really can't be doing a comprehensive plan without vision, and it can't be one person's vision. It needs to be a community's vision. What we're really talking about is a process, participatory process, that engages as many people as want to get involved in visioning what this town could be in 20 years. How you could leverage that, so many others have been successful, some very, some less so. We can put you in touch with a bunch of them. We can call them directly and just ask.
I might suggest, and I take your points quite, you know, quite well. I think part of it is, there is a tendency to think that when you have a center like this, that the solutions tend to print out, and we just print them and send them type of thing. The idea behind this is that it is fundamentally different, and the proof of that would be, for those that would like to consult, the Monette City webpage, the Monette City Plan is there. And that would happen to be one of the great communities that has been able to use it in a successful way. But kind of giving another side of that, in the frame that, the other side is in Crane. If you go to the Crane City website, they actually have one. If you think about a community and the challenges economically and so on, it would be similar. I think Crane might not be a bad one to take a look at, because what it does is it looks at aspects of localization of economy. That's something that architects normally don't deal with, and I don't know about other professionals, but, you know, where are you going to have that discussion if not for an opportunity like this? Other things that I would throw out there, and this is kind of the value of the, I guess, the vision, and I'll probably use this as a closing point. One of my favorite places in Missouri is to go up to the Capitol Building. Take 4-H kids and others up there, and having some architectural knowledge is nice, because you can kind of describe what's going on in the building. One of the things I really like to do with those kids is go over to the ceremonial door on the mezzanine. The governor must be 12 feet tall, at least, that's the way the door looks.
Mayor hears like that.
There you go. That's what I thought. Well, whenever you walk out, if you could walk out the ceremonial door for the governor and stand at the top of that staircase that splits you right and left, and look directly across that space underneath the dome, we look at different little phrases, and I guess this is the week that we kind of go back and think about patriotic phrases and wisdom handed down to us. But as the governor comes out of his office and looks across that, inscribed in the stone there is the statement, "Without vision, the people will perish." And the first time I saw that, I nearly fell over, because I was up there talking to people about what I was doing, and I stood there, turned, and there it was. It all came together just like that. So if there's any questions beyond that, I'd certainly be glad to take them, or otherwise, I think we all have a lot to discuss.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Barber?
What's the timeframe on this? How much time before the decision need to be made?
Well, we are intending currently to have eight students work with this community at the end of August through December. This will be their sole semester project for their design studio. They'll have other classes, but they will invest roughly 200-plus hours per student. So you'd be about, the way Jay and I look at this is, at $200 an hour, if it was a billable thing, this is not professional service, but if we try to put a value on it, I don't know what you guys pay interns, but an intern would bill out roughly for $50 an hour. 200, you have about $10,000 in stuff per student. 200, you're at about $10,000 in stuff per student. If you want to think of it that way, you're about $80,000 in street value for what the city's liability would be, $2,500. That's a leveraging of almost 40 or more.
What we, I don't know if you asked, okay. What we would prefer is if we knew by around August 1st that this is going to go or not, and then the thirdly, by August 15th at Drury. If we knew that it was going to go, the letter agreement, which is contract assigned, I've signed it, Andy has signed it for extension, the only one we're waiting for, the mayor. If that's signed and we know the money is coming, we can extend the August 15th till late. The other thing that could occur, and this occurred in Cumberland City, is that $2,500 from the city could either be cash or in-kind donation. What the community did is they're going to be, students will be here a lot. I mean, they'll be here all days on Saturdays. They'll come up here and spend five, six, seven hours per night. They went around and the mayor in Cumberland City had food vouchers at various restaurants. And so there were X number of food vouchers of basically $10 each, and they happily give those up and took off the $2,500. So, I mean, it could be in kind. Those are ways that you can do it. So, I mean, you can recreate it. They also passed a hand. I mean, I was sitting there and in Cumberland City, the past mayor said, "I'll put in 500." I'm meeting with him, "I'll put in 500." The second mayor from the back said, "I'll match it." So we're out at the mat, sitting in the room, we had $1,000. So it could be donations, it could be coming out of the city coffers, it could be in-kind donations. The more that you can spread the buy-in, the better.
Part of the systematic aspects of partnering with extension also is if you wanted to make a designated donation or gift to extension, it's board vision, it could happen that way as well. And ideally, it's best if it does have some traction outside of city halls and grant money because that way people have a stake in it. And if people have a stake in it, then by golly, you know, they kind of earn their, I don't want to say it that way, I don't want to say they bought their place at the table, but, you know, they are going to stick with it, let's just put it that way.
Does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Coltrane?
Well, I'm just wondering if I'm understanding this correctly, is this in total, this is going to be the, you know, the $2,500 from the city and then the grant money, so it's a total?
Forty-five, forty-five.
In total, altogether for this whole thing?
That's it.
It doesn't really seem like a lot of money for professional people to come in and kind of help, I mean, somebody who has a little bit more knowledge, you know, about how to fill in the lines on what a lot of people would like to see in Buffalo. This doesn't seem like a lot, and it seems, I mean, I know a lot of community organizations that have raised at least half of that, just a fundraiser and, you know.
Right. It's my opinion that this is certainly worthwhile. It's a low cost for the city, and there are matching funds of, from, from the healthy lifestyle.
Yes.
King mentioned having a comprehensive plan, and what, what's the 45-prong test that's in some of the grant, what's that called?
Well, just as you know, as you've been going through the Economic Development Department's list of visioning, which is the same visioning that you're talking about here, you are looking at what the growth of the city is, how to encourage economic development, how to promote kids staying here instead of leaving, just a myriad list that's in the Economic Development Department's packet of things that you've been working on. So all this data that they're going to collect will give you additional information to utilize for different things in the future.
Right.
The difference between if you hire someone to come in and do a comprehensive plan, it is not just a comprehensive plan, it is also a visioning process, but it also gets down to under the skin and under the beauty of what is your water system like, what's your sewer system like, what do all these things have to, how does that skeleton have to be developed to support this beauty that's going to go on top of it as the future growth occurs? So you can have a beautiful picture of what you want it to be, but if you can't afford the skeleton of infrastructure that goes underneath it, you don't have anything that can actually ever flourish and occur. So comprehensive plan takes a lot more knowledge and takes a lot more in-depth work to be done than what you'd want to have a bunch of students doing. This allows them to get their, a little bit of taste of real-world public meetings and those type of things and acquiring information, and gives that information back to you in a useful form that hopefully you can utilize in proper places to help the city grow as you move forward.
So if anything, this is a good first step.
Again, you'd want to make, you know, do your due diligence, look at what the product's going to be, and go based on the product that you see, and if that's something that you feel is beneficial to the city, then move forward.
Some summary on product typically is 45 public meetings. In this case, I think we have five visits, four public meetings. First one is a meeting. Second one would, well, excuse me. Second product is between 40 and 60 presentation boards, poster size, they're usually 24 by 36, that are left with the community. And then lastly, the book, which we've also in the past included a DVD with an electronic copy of the book, PowerPoint presentations, photographs gathered, it's kind of this data collection that we're talking about back there. And ultimately, I see these as complimentary because what he's talking about is execution, or basically making the strategic steps forward and the analysis that's necessary. And this is kind of the big picture in part of that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to table this for two weeks, give us time to soak it, when that crash decision we had this meeting tonight. Let us look at it, let us think about it for two weeks, it's no great big deal, let's get more time to really soak in what, nobody's saying no or yes. Again, tourist in five minutes, we'd like, I don't go longer than five minutes.
Certainly, and this is something that, as you only came to me six months ago, and I'd mentioned it to the board at that time, that it's something that I would like to consider and it's developed a little more. I believe you're in China, sir, is that correct? Did you learn anything over there? Do you speak Chinese now?
A little bit more.
But something I had mentioned before and something I certainly wanted our folks from here and afar to come and present this to the board for our consideration. Certainly cabling it for two weeks is no problem, it's something I think we can all look at and consider.
Mr. Mayor, if it would be of assistance, we might be before we brought a number of documents that we have produced by the communities, which we showed you. What we can do is we can bring a number of those copies back immediately to the city board.
Okay.
If members of the council would like to come in and look at those for the next two weeks so that they can bring this back in a day or two.
Ms. Martha, we'll make them available to the public in our own room. We have someone from Habitat for Humanity here. Sir, would you stand and introduce yourself?
Most, you know, Leroy Lautenbach, I'm the president this year of the local Habitat for Humanity affiliate, and I wanted to invite the board and the community to our open house dedication ceremony for our most recent build we've completed. It's on 420 North Plum Street, and it's going to be this Friday at 5:30 PM. We're going to have some cake and drinks. We'd like to invite the public and especially the Board of Alderman to come on by and walk through the home and invite the Blue family, Blue Blevins family into their new home and see what Habitat does for the community. Also, on a side note, we would like to say thanks to Dave Randolph here, the building inspector. He's been real helpful with all our volunteers, and anytime we have a question of codes or which way we should do things, Dave Randolph has really been an asset to our building committee in putting this home in its entirety. So thank you, Dave. We appreciate your wisdom and guidance.
To my understanding, Dave waved a whole lot of the code, so how's it be?
No, don't. They go in there.
I'm just kidding.
But come on out, it'll be a festive day for the Blues. They are anxious to get in their new home. It's one of the, the boys' room is painted Mizzou colors. You know, girls got good, they're all excited about it. So it's a good, it's a good home, so come on by.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
One more thing I've added to the mayor's comments, and I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Rachel, he has an open letter he would like to read to the board. Sir?
This is in regard to the bids of our last meeting that were opened between Ewing and Morgan, and we received a letter today from Morgan Concrete in regard to that. They're not contesting the board's action, but they do feel like there are some inaccuracies that were brought up at that meeting that they wanted to address, and I did indicate to the Morgans that I would read this letter to the board and to the community. It says, "To the Buffalo City Council, first, I would like to thank you for even considering our bid with all the inaccurate information you received. It was reported on June 13th, 2012, in the Buffalo Reflex that it was going to cost the city $10,000 more to use us rather than Ewing. For it to cost that much more, you would have had to buy 2,105 yards of concrete at $83 and a quarter for a total of $175,241. That's enough concrete to pour this street 24 feet wide and 4 inches thick from Main Street to Truman. New paragraph. At my calculations, with the limited information I was given, the sidewalks will be approximately eight tenths of a mile or 4,225 feet, 4 inches thick, figures 2,600 yards of concrete. A curb on both sides of the street figured at 2 and 1/2 feet wide, 6 inches thick by 84 or 50 feet in length, figures 390 yards of concrete. At 50 more yards for driveways and boxes, for an approximate total of 700 yards. At our price of $88 per yard, we towed $61,600. Ewing's price of $83.25 would be $58,275 for a difference of $3,325, apart from the $10,000 that was reported. We aren't sure where that information came from because the YouTube video of the meeting was incomplete. New paragraph. We also have four licenses and insured trucks, not two, as told to you by Mr. Chief. As for hot water, I thought this job was to be completed by August before the new school year. If that was not misinformation also, there would be no need for hot water. As for our reputation, though we try, no company can please everyone 100% of the time. Being in business for 35 years should stand for something. Don't get us wrong, we got beat fair and square. It was misinformation that influenced your decision and the way it was reported in the paper that we are upset about. Hopefully, we'll be able to do business for the city of Buffalo in the future. This is our home. We choose to live here on our active, in our community, and churches. The way it was reported makes people question our integrity, and that is what hurts. Thank you for allowing us this time sincerely, the Morgan's family, Morgan's Concrete Company, and employees."
Thank you, sir.
If I could add to that, we do have an ordinance, section 115.560. It says if all bids received, or, I'm sorry, it says if all bids received and the lowest bids received are for the same total amount for unit price, quality, and service being equal, the contracts shall be awarded to the local bidder. The Ewing company bid lower, regardless of whether or not we were wrong in our figuring $10,000 versus $3,000, they still had the low bid. So we have an ordinance that says that we are to take the low bid, but in the case of a tie, we can go with the local bidder, so.
I don't think their question will last. That has never been the issue. The issue was their reputation, I think, in Ewing.
And I'm sorry, it's my, um, miscalculations, is my calculator caused any of that misrepresentation.
By the way, too, that's an ordinance that needs to be changed. That's not the way state law reads for counties. Counties are required to take a certain number of bids under certain circumstances. They're not required to take the low bid, and there's darn good reason to that being in the law, and I certainly think that our ordinance needs to be adjusted. I'm not sure when that ordinance, and I was aware of our ordinance saying that, but it's a very bad ordinance and should be changed.
I think that right above when it says, "When the award is not given to the lowest bidder, a full and complete statement of the reasons for placing the order elsewhere shall be entered upon the journal of awards," right?
But that's inconsistent. That's inconsistent with the other state.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it says that the board shall do something, but if the board violates their own statute, then they should state why.
Okay.
But it worked for me when I was three and I had one too many cookies. But Mr. Rachel, we'll certainly address that, hopefully, in the upcoming meetings, and we'd make that a little bit more user-friendly and help us to at least drive your local way.
Well, once again, the council, when we passed that, it really wasn't local on the other side. It was $10,000 and it was based upon our information and the amount of yards we used. Now, I don't think anybody here, except Piper, ever poured a yard of concrete, so we'd have no idea what we were doing, except that we have to take information that is fed to us in a manner which we think is, or should be exactly the way it is. It wasn't anything, $3,000 would have made a difference, probably. $10,000 is a lot of money at the city of Buffalo, and Ronnie's second mayor, and Tommy knows that, you know, me for a lot of years, $3,000 wouldn't have made any difference. $10,000 is a lot of money, and I think he realizes that as well. But our bid and accepting that bid as one who voted for it is still based upon the information we received the night that we voted, because that was the question that was asked and received, the total number of yards that was. And that's all I can say about it. We appreciate you later, we understand your feeling, nothing personal, it was still the number of yards that we were informed that we would use and that was part of the bid. And I hope that you understand how, I think I speak for everybody on this council. That's the way it is, and we can undo, we can change it, but next time we'll have consideration, and we hope that the information is given to us at that time is the exact information. And we're still talking today, we're not sure, I don't think anybody here knows exactly of how many we're going to like. I'm going to like it when it's all done, I'd like to know. We will know how many yards is for it. It won't be a guess because we will know exactly at that time in the city. It won't be a guess because we will know exactly at that time, and as far as I'm concerned, that's one issue that will come out of that local street project, is the number of concrete yards that was actually put into that job for our own peace of mind and for yours, too.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have for mayor's comments. I'll move on to modifications of the agenda. Are there any modifications to our agenda? I think we just spent the last hour modifying, that's neither here nor there. I see no other modifications. Citizen comments, do we have anyone here that would like to voice, have their voice heard? I see none. Minutes and bills.
Can I approve the minutes and bills for last year?
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for a roll of the vote.
Larry.
Yes.
Christie.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
Jim.
Wayne.
Hi.
That motion passes. Moving on to department head reports, Ms. Paulson, the administration.
I don't have anything else, I've been busy between dangerous buildings and trying to get all the tax sound notices done.
You don't want to get away the dangerous building, you might get hurt. Any questions for our administration? Animal control. Our animal control, Lady Miss Payton is, Mrs. Payton is on vacation, is not here. Our building inspector, sir?
I have been coming to have a report.
Is there any questions of our building inspector? I just want to state that Mr. Randolph did not wave any, uh, thank you, he helped Roy to the line. All right, I see no questions. Our fire department, Chief Higgins?
Did everybody get their report? Late, I didn't have to use the report, I left it on location, so we got this one.
Mr. Mayor, should we excuse our, I may have missed out a lot.
If you don't mind, I'm actually interested in hearing on reports.
You don't have.
When we get to water adjustments, I know that's the time to leave, right?
Sir? Any questions of our fire?
Got a car payment? It's there now.
Parks and Recreation, Mr. Hurd?
Nothing to add, except I met with engineers, they abandoned center to kind of check out the roof, see what's going on there. I met with them Thursday. We should, hopefully next week or so, have something back in there, just kind of a plan to see if we can get that roof sealed up correctly.
Okay, and I'll explain, probably, we've put a lot of time and effort into beautifying a rundown building that a former mayor said, we don't need to take care of our buildings, they kind of take care of themselves, and as it turns out, that was not the case. So, we put a lot of time and effort, a lot of volunteer hours and donations into sprucing up the place and caring for it, and lo and behold, the same problems are starting to occur again, so this time we needed to get ahold of a structural engineer, who knows a little, no offense to Roger, Roger has a climb ladder and can crawl up there, but it was time to call in the cavalry, the people, and now we have an idea of what's going on, we think it might be the roof, is that correct?
Yeah, he said he would get out a ladder recommendation of where to go next.
Matt Seale, remember, last year?
Big group was still six, seven years ago, smaller, maybe four years ago, and two separate, yes, it was sealed, just by being up with him, he wasn't impressed with it, but I'll find that out.
And now I'm gonna seal it?
Bob Ossen.
Okay, they do good work.
We'll see when his letter comes back on what he recommends us to do.
Any questions for Mr. Hurd? I see none. Police Department?
Chief Arslan's away at a traffic conference this week. I've got the stats for June, we had a hundred and fifty-two calls for service, seventy-three citations, traffic in ordinance, seven vehicle accidents, thirty-nine arrests, to consist of eight for possession of controlled substance, five warrants, four assaults, four no driver's license, four stealing, two disorderly conduct, two supplying intoxicants to minors, two driving while intoxicated, one endangering the welfare of the child, one interfering with the arrest, one attempting to escape from custody, one obstructing police, one false impersonation, one failure to provide auto insurance, one open container being alcohol, and one stop sign violation.
Who were they impersonating?
I don't know.
Is it a crime to impersonate an Alderman?
Uh.
Because I do a really good impersonation, Rachel.
Who would you?
Any questions of our police department? I see none. Street water report, Mr. Jasper?
I haven't got anything, just, I haven't heard anything during, I figured they'd be here to do a blacktop, but they haven't called, we do, yes.
It's my understanding they were going to be over in Oliver and working their way towards us.
Somebody said they're trying to hold off, they got the bank pretty close, and they're going to do the bank and ours all at the same time.
Okay.
That's my understanding now, I just, I haven't talked to anybody that really knows just here.
Is that to be a pay surprise since they're doing pay jobs once?
I mean, it ain't this, but you know how that goes. We can try and see what else. But, you know, I've been helping Mike some, and we've all been, we've just got plenty of work.
Okay, good.
You know.
Well, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Jasper? All right, tax collection report. Any questions regarding our tax collection report? I see none. Our wastewater treatment plant, sir?
Okay, I've only got one thing I want to talk to guys about tonight, that's well number two, I want to give you an update on it. I was wrong. From the people that I have talked to, we do not need to cut that well off. They told me that as long as that well is producing good water, the last thing you want to do is shut it off. So, I talked to Roger, and he and his guys are going to get, they're going to dig the line up. We'll put in a new valve on the well side of the, of the valve that's failing right now, and we need to replace the line back to the well, and then the guy that I talked to, Flynn, he's going to come look at it then, but he said we got to have the water cut off before he can come look at it. So then he's going to come in and tell us which is the best way to go, whether to go out and under the well, or go through the sidewall. But either way, then we'll know more about what we're doing and getting it prepared. So that's where it's at right now.
Wonderful. Any questions for us? I see none. All right, water adjustments.
I wonder if we should approve that.
Is there a second?
I have a second, I'm in.
I'll call for a roll.
Christie.
Hi.
Wayne.
It's fine.
Jess. Are you on it?
No, I'm not.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize this conflict matters. Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
James.
That motion passes, five days and one extension. All right, old business. I don't see any old business schedules, is there anything, anyone want to bring up anything from the past? Well, we've all healed. All right, new business, bids for the soccer concession stand, Mr. Piper has bid for us. It's my understanding we have a bid for ten thousand, six hundred dollars from Buffalo Discount Lumber, and a bid for eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars from Meeks. Lowest bid for Buffalo Discount of ten thousand, six hundred dollars. Mr. Piper, will you tell us what that covers?
Everything. This person built the material on it, it covers everything. The only thing I missed on it, the material out there, lumber, I cut that, was softening for that four-foot overhang, totally about seventy dollars. Missed that, the rest of the material really should be there. And I think, I'm sure, there'd be a term on the other material, the board can take care of that seventy dollars of that softening.
Okay, so, and we talked about, instead of, instead of doing block, because we've got the footing prepared for blocks, I spoke with Mr. Cheek, Mike, you're here, aren't you? Hiding in the back. My understanding, we could pour a little foundation over that and then build our wooden structure with trusses, and this covers trusses, shingles and everything.
Okay, everything except your.
That's softening.
That's softening, and I didn't figure those twelve pictures.
Okay, and I included that.
I didn't know, and you expanded.
Right.
Or a little, I didn't know what you were talking about there.
Okay. Okay, we discussed the potentiality of having Mike build that as, as a city employee, maybe some of Roger's guys, I got a brand-new idea, is that we could probably do it with a lot of volunteer labor. I've got an air compressor, nail gun, Jim, you could probably give me a little bit of instruction where to put a nail or two, and we could probably make this a community project, put it up with volunteer work. That's my thought on it.
Any comments?
Yeah, I don't, I got a nail gun and an air compressor. As I stand here right now, I've got ten fingers, I probably won't be married with ten fingers, but I've got ten fingers. Do we, do we have a motion to, for that lowest bid? Is there a second?
Yes.
I'll call for a roll of the vote.
James.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Wayne.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
Christie.
Hi.
That motion unanimously passes. All right, we've got bill number twelve dash oh-two, reenactment of an order to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials. Does everyone have a copy of that, said supposed orders?
Counselor, I have a word for you. How does this vary from the conflict of interest side?
I don't know what that is.
This, you have to reenact it every two years to keep everybody from doing a financial disclosure statement. Instead, it just requires anybody running for mayor and me to do a financial disclosure statement with the state.
I'll make the motion first.
Is there a second? Can I call for a roll?
Jim.
Hi.
Wayne.
Hi.
James.
Correct.
Jim. Oh, I got two Jims. Larry.
Hi.
Christie.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
Do we need a second?
Yes. Yes.
All right, second reading.
I'll make the motion, we approve the second reading.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second, man. All right, I'll call for a roll.
Jess.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Jim.
Wayne.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Christie.
Hi.
The motion unanimously passes. Debbie, did I have to do one of those disclosure things? Did I do one?
I thought you did.
I did.
You just say I'm broke.
I know you about it.
All right, well, that's all we have for our open meeting, does anyone have any other public comments before we close? Do we have a motion to go into closed meeting, pursuant to section six, ten oh-two-one, subsection one for litigation?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I see.
I'll call for a vote, a roll.
Wayne.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Christie.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
That motion unanimously passes, we'll take a five-minute recess before we go into closing.